The October 19th meeting of the Planning Commission order will begin with the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jess, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Varga.
Here.
Mrs. Semperman.
Here.
Ms. Moritz.
Here.
Mr. Perkovic.
Excused.
Mr. Sedoti.
Here.
Mr. Valeri.
Excused.
Mr. Snow.
Here.
Entertained a motion for the approval of the minutes of the September 28th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mrs. Semperman.
Yes.
Ms. Moritz.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
We have one public hearing this evening in the format. We follow for the public hearing as we allow the applicant an opportunity to tell us what they want to do at a particular location. Then those wishing to speak in favor are given an opportunity. Then those wishing to speak against are afforded a similar opportunity. So with that in mind, conditional use permit to allow a commercial recreation facility at 7859 Mentor Avenue. Is that applicant here? I see they are. If you'd identify yourself for the clerk, please.
Yes, Matt Jerkowitz, Washington Prime Group, Director of Development.
Okay, and give us a little indication of what you want to do with that location.
Sure. Yeah, thank you guys for your time tonight. What we're looking to do, the former Dillard's Men's store at the mall was recently acquired by our company. We were able to get control of that so we could facilitate what we think is a very exciting new addition to the Mentor community, a large format entertainment use, round one. They're international, based out of Japan. Fortunately, we have a representative of the tenant company here today to be able to speak to their operation.
So they want to see if you're doing a good job, right?
That's right. That's right. He's here to support us in presenting the conditional use permit here today. So again, what we're trying to accomplish here is bring some entertainment to the site. This will be the first large format operator on our property. We're partnering on the lower level with this use, a corner restaurant, which you can see on your, I believe you guys have it on your screen in front of you, but you can see the large format restaurant on the corner facing Plaza and Mentor, the corner of Plaza and Mentor for those who are orientated. That'll be our restaurant position. Round one itself will have food service within the space. It'll also have billiards. It'll also have bowling. It'll also have karaoke party rooms and a large game area for youngsters and old alike. So that's the use that they're proposing to make of the space.
Okay.
Would you like to speak to any other particulars of the operation?
Well, this CUP is for the recreational part of use.
Correct.
So that's what we need to deal with. We'll deal with the building itself a little later on. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against? Okay, we'll close the public portion. Mr. Spence, any comments from the administration?
Yeah, we just included two conditions. One, that they get a license for the electronic amusement devices. And then the second is they comply that anyone under 18, according to Chapter 747, pool and billiards need to be with a guardian or a parent if they're in the billiards room.
Okay. You don't have a problem with those conditions, right?
No, no. We understand that the condition, the second condition, is something that can be met on an interior specific basis, that we can, I think we limit the access to the billiard-specific area within the premises. So no issues.
So you're fine with those?
That's correct.
Okay. Commission members, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Semperman.
In the staff report, it mentions that the proposed hours are from 10 to 2:00 a.m., correct? 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.?
I believe so, yes.
And then it mentions that between 10 and 12, you must be over 21 years of age. So I presume that means 10 and 2?
10 and 2, correct, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, commission members? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve CUP for recreational purposes, subject to two conditions.
Three.
Second.
Jess, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mrs. Semperman.
Yes.
Ms. Moritz.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Okay. We'll catch you later on in the building itself. Okay, under old business, Mr. Spence, number two stays on the table?
Correct, that remains on the table.
Number three moves forward. I don't see, yeah, there he is, hiding in the corner back there. Entertain a motion to remove it from the table.
Motion to remove.
Second.
Jess, when you're ready.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mrs. Semperman.
Yes.
Ms. Moritz.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Go right ahead, Mr. Longo.
Vario.
Good.
There was some concern.
Joe Longo for 9324 Mentor Avenue for the old Rich's Lounge. You wanted to see on the floor?
This would be the side of the building, and this would be the front. But after talking
to our, after we put the windows in, having the issues that we're having with the brick, we're proposing now to add some stone to it from the top of the black awning down, which is approximately about 11 feet, and also where that side entrance is that goes upstairs.
Okay.
So give it a little bit more contrast, putting the stone along with this colored brick, which would be the top part.
Mr. Spence, any comments from the administration?
No.
No? I think it looks good, right?
Yep.
Commission members?
I just had a quick question.
Yes.
So when I went out there today, there was block.
Correct.
And this is going to be on top of the block?
Correct.
Okay. And then the rest of the bricks, so the whole bottom part will be block underneath the stonework, or you're just going to put the stonework over or whatever?
From the top of this point.
Right.
Down, the entire front.
Right.
And then also this portion as well, underneath that canopy.
Okay.
Will be this material.
Okay.
And then where the sign, where it says tenant signage up is where we would be painting using this lighter color brick on the front, and then obviously still putting the white cap across the top.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Spence, any comments from the administration?
No.
Okay. Any other questions from the commission for the applicant?
Motion to approve. Second.
Jess?
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mrs. Semperman.
Yes.
Ms. Moritz.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. We'll leave the information on the building samples with Mr. Spence.
Sure. You want?
Or the numbers, or the numbers off the board. You're welcome. Okay, item four. There's only two. Oh, yeah, this is the same thing over.
Yep.
Only different, same thing over. Item four, a new business, architectural review, reimagining of a commercial building at 7850 Mentor Avenue, back in business.
Again, Matt Jerkowitz for Washington, Mark Politek from RDL is going to present the material board for everybody's benefit and to the particulars of the exterior.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. Mark Politek, I am the Director of the Commercial Studio for RDL Architects. We've re-enhanced the front of both the two sides of the existing Dillard's building to meet one, round one's needs, and to enhance an entry for a future restaurant going in the corner to bring a little more life to the actual center. The round one piece, when you hit this end of the building, this is all the existing brick facade that sits on the building. Excuse me. We're not adding anything else to the brick. We're proposing to paint the brick. The upper half will be a darker gray color. Then we have the round one corporate red stripe that they use for their material, and then a white paint for the balance of the field. The pop-up portion is an EFS pop-out, which will be a bolt-on to create a grand entry for the actual structure. Again, will be painted with a similar white paint to bring the building together with the red signage to tie that portion in. As we move around to the restaurant, it's the same dark gray field coming around. The proposed piece is to paint the building, that entire gray color, to give it a new facelift because the brick there is fairly dirty and dated. The restaurant portion will consist of a metal, metal facing over here, which is a corrugated metal. We have hardy board siding that goes between, and a thin brick veneer that's going to go on over a cement board structure with black copings going across. This is the proposed color scheme going around the building. So round one's colors are the two primary whites with the red stripes, and this is our gray, gray field building color. This will be the corrugated metal siding that will create the sign bands for the actual restaurant piece going up high, painted this color to match the, both the hardy lap siding with the copings being black. And the storefront system will be a black material also.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
When you paint the building, how, what's the shelf life of the paint when you paint this stone or brick?
Going with the brick paints by Sherman Williams, they're saying you can get a 15 to 20-year paint life on the actual material if it's applied in the correct manner.
Okay.
And it is a breathable paint. It is made for the cementitious brick structures, so it can breathe.
Okay. Are you finished? I was going to ask if there's any questions of the commission.
No, please.
Okay. Commissioners, questions for the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Semperman.
So you pointed out the first three colors. What are those other two colors that you didn't point out? That one, it looks like a cream?
This is, this is the main white color that's going around.
Okay.
This is the underside color that goes underneath the entry piece. This is the red stripes. This gray is the field color that the existing Dillard's building will be painted. This is the lower half of the EFS below the white at the entry points. And then these are the hardy lap siding which goes on top of the restaurant portion.
And that block on the?
This brick is the lower cast stone portion that's going to create a cementitious base around the bottom, which will tie into the brick veneer that we're proposing for the restaurant.
You need to move that a little bit, so it's, there you go.
There was a question there. Is the signage, the white, going to go wrap around the south side of the building?
Yes, it is the same color scheme going around the south side.
That's the west side?
Correct.
And that's the north side?
Correct.
How about the south side?
The south side, which goes into the loading dock zone, is, we will carry the white around with some of the gray. I mean, that, they don't have any entry points at that point of the building, except for backing their trucks in.
But it's still visible as you come north on Plaza, right?
Correct.
Yes. Our plan is that we carry it around the trade dress on the south side, back towards essentially where it terminates into the, into the loading zone.
Okay.
And then we would end it. There would continue to have the band of gray, field gray, carrying around the backside to wrap the entire building with that same crown piece. And then we would, again, around the loading dock, probably carry that field gray down. Apologies for not having brought that rendering of that edifice, but that's the plan.
Okay. Now, you talk about the second story being a potential lease available for anybody who wants to lease it. Do you have any thoughts in mind of who might go in there?
At this time, we don't. It's actually what we were able to find out in the relatively recent, recent past with Mark's team's help on the diligence side, was to determine the load capacity of that building, second floor of that building. We do have an assembly rated 100 per square foot tolerance for load, so we are now in a position where we can open up our leasing strategy to a lot of uses that we didn't have.
Okay. Is it possible at some point that you guys would take advantage of that second floor?
Absolutely. That's our expectation. So what we've done, if you, if you, do we have a layout again, have the ability to show? What we've done is we've carved out on the, that would be the southwest corner of the building, a portico for vertical transportation. In the future, to the extent we're able to find the right tenant for the space, we would build it out and potentially put a, put a vertical, vertical transportation tower there with elevators, potentially escalators, stairs for sure, to facilitate whether that's a office, you know, banquet event type, type facility, or, or more likely office, medical office type use.
Okay. Now, there's plenty of parking there, right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
This is the actual plan of that front corner.
Okay.
Future elevator tying in with the stairs at the point of where that becomes a viable tenant. And towards the other end of the building, we're going to add another means of egress out to meet the egress codes once it is actually determined what the tenant is. There's, there's adequate egress right now the way it sits, but if it becomes a larger assembly piece, we'll have to add the second stair. And we've implemented into the design already the shaft ways for that to happen.
Okay. Now, are you able to identify the potential outside restaurant area, who that tenant might be? I mean, if you are, great. If you're not, I understand.
Yeah, unfortunately, we're not. We are in active negotiations with several tenants. One in particular, we've, we've got hopes that we'll be able to finalize a deal with soon, but at this point, we're not in a position.
Okay, that's fine. I'm just curious. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Vario.
Assuming, you know, down the road, you're going to get the second floor tenant. How does the second floor tenant, its development, its build-out affect the elevations of the building that we see in front of us now?
Right. So what we would hope to do in the future, once we identify what the use is, is figure out whether there's, whether there's, you know, glazing that needs to be added to provide light. And at that time, we'd be able to try to accommodate whatever their particular use would require. Right now, what we've done is, you know, essentially kept the existing, the existing facade in place. We're not adding a lot of additional materials, so it's a blank canvas that's still, while subject to painting, is going to be available for us to modify in the future.
Well, I mean, you already have a lot of stuff going on here. You have the restaurant expression in the corner. You have the white and red stripes and the, I mean, if you start adding a bunch of windows too, this would get kind of busy, you would think.
Yeah, I think, I think what we're hopeful we'll be able to accomplish once we identify what the tenant is, is find a solution that would be, you know, obviously, we're going to have to come back in no matter what we do to meet with your guys' approval as well. But we'll find something that makes, you know, makes the most of what the, of what the site would allow for us to do for that, for that particular use.
Yeah, I'm just thinking down the road about not getting yourself in the corner, not getting us in the corner, about saying, well, now we have to have a window every eight feet, and we, you know, you have this whole composition here, and it's all going to go south when you start putting windows in it.
Well, I think, I think it's fair to say, when we do get to that point, we'll be, you know, in active conversations with our, with our other tenants in the building, round one, our restaurant tenant, making sure we're in a position where we are going to inevitably have to modify the exterior. So we're, we're in a position.
And we'll see you then.
Revisit with you guys what we do.
Question, another question, different subject completely. The building now is white. Had you considered using the white of the existing building instead of painting it white, of using that white that never has to be painted?
The cleanability of it, we've looked at trying to clean it. We cannot get it back to the actual colors.
It was just a thought.
Yeah. We, we thought about that from a cost savings aspect for the client.
And then another question, completely different. The existing building has some plantings, foundation plantings, kind of mounted tree plantings and things like that around the building on, on the two primary elevations. I realize that with the restaurant going in the corner, it might be hard to preserve those trees and those planters. What about the other foundation plantings? Are you, are they not just being shown, or are all these going away completely?
I, I don't know if we've, if we've developed a landscape plan specifically for the site yet, but our expectation is that there is left space there. There's depth from the Plaza, from the Plaza Boulevard elevation. There will be opportunities for us to have some planted areas right out front. They're not shown in the rendering, but, but that's our expectation.
Mr. Spence, any comments on that? Foundation plantings are an integral part of this, right?
Well, I think it, the reim, I don't think there, it kicks in the landscape code if you just got reimagining.
Yeah, but I hate, I hate to give up what's there.
Yeah, you, you have substantial landscaping now. The plans, the current plans proposals don't show any, so I'm just trying to see. Mr. Zeman, comments?
Well, I don't know that, like I said, it's primarily a facade reimagining. I don't know that.
Well, if you look at the picture in the corner, the existing facade, you can see there's some substantial trees.
Well, I, I understand that, and granted, they're not in the renderings that you've been provided, but I suppose just asking the applicant, do they intend on removing any of the landscape material? And if so, what? And how might it be replaced?
Our preference would be is to clean it up and trim back and enhance it. Obviously, a building needs landscaping to help it, and I'm sure the tenant itself would like to have something to beautify the front of it with not something massively high to hide the building, but to actually enhance the structure. So, I mean, our intent would be to work with, with the development.
When you're ready, you could bring a landscaping plan forward to the administration.
Yes, sir.
Right? Okay. Would that satisfy you?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Semperman.
You had mentioned EFS on the bottom part of, so I wasn't, I confused, I was confused as to where that was.
Turn it around.
The lower pier pieces were to be a high-impact EFS, just on the bottom half of round one's entry.
Why didn't you want to do those in brick?
This was part of their, their prototypical piece that we were following.
And then it's attached to brick? The rest of the facade's brick?
The facade, the rest of the facade is the existing brick that's there. We're popping out that front entry.
Right. And that front entry is going to be brick?
No.
No, up high, that whole piece will be EFS, a high-impact EFS.
That's what I needed to know, okay.
So would you rather see brick there, Mrs. Semperman?
Yeah, I would.
Okay. Can you do brick?
Yeah, I mean, I think that we're, it, it's a matter of, you know, I guess, at some point, I, we certainly can take a look at, at the, at the brick possibilities. I mean, yes, can you, a thin brick and?
We could probably create it out of a thin brick. We'll cer, we'll certainly.
Okay.
And that would be my, my prefer of, if we're going to go vertical, to go with a thin brick, because to go that high with standard brick, you start getting with large structural implications that, where you got shelf angles that need to happen. So I think we can.
Yeah. I mean, I think that would be the only way we could without, I mean, that much weight.
And then I had another question, and it actually had to do with what Mr. Snow had asked. Are, is round one planning on utilizing the second floor at all?
No.
So you're looking for another tenant?
That's correct. Yes. And there's roughly 60,000 square feet up there, so very wide open.
Well, I, I agree. I just was taught, I was just thinking about what Mr. Vario was saying, in that, you know, you pretty much are taking up the entire wall on both the south, or west and the north sides. And I'm just trying to figure out how another tenant would get in there and be visible.
Right. Again, I think that we'll be in a position, once we, once we get to that point where we have interest, we can cross that bridge, you know, in negotiations with our tenants to take advantage of, you know, of that opportunity.
And how tall is that pin?
The total building height?
No, the pin, the bowling pin.
One.
Seventeen.
Seventeen feet?
There's a door next to it. Doors are seven foot high, so.
It's two and a half times that door.
Mr. Zeman, that fits the code now, correct?
That is signage, yes. So, and given the setback, it would come in for.
So that, that fits, that fits the code?
It does now, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Sedoti?
I may have read this, but I don't recall. You said there's a, there'll be a bar in there for the 21 and older crowd?
That's correct. It's not a full bar. Would you like to speak to Shane?
I'll need you to identify yourself for the clerk, please.
Hi, Shane Kaji with Round One Entertainment. Did I have to give my address to for, do I have to give my address?
No, no.
Oh, you're good.
Some places, they require you to tell your address, so. So if I may explain a little bit more about our, our food service, it's not a full-service restaurant. It's just like any bowling alley, it is, we call it finger food, you know, mostly fried stuff. And we just have a simple beer bar and some wine, so obviously no hard liquor, or whiskey, or any of that sort. And we, we don't rely on their sales. They're just more of a supplement to our entertainment. So that's all I have to say about the beer service.
For the beer and wine service, you need a beer and wine license?
I believe so, yes.
So you have to apply for that for the state of Ohio?
Yes.
Or you have one now?
We don't have one yet. It's in process.
Anything else, Mr. Sedoti?
No, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? If there aren't any, I'll entertain a motion. I'm going to add a condition to the motion, that you're going to have to do the landscaping plan and bring it to the administration.
Motion to approve with two conditions.
And we want to see brick on the lower part of that entryway.
Understood.
At least on the lower part.
So you got three conditions?
Yeah.
The brick is the third.
Motion to approve with three conditions.
Jess, when you're ready.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mrs. Semperman.
Yes.
Ms. Moritz.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. You're good.
Thank you.
Item five, final site plan of a commercial building at 9200 Mentor Avenue. Mr. Spence is picking, billing up his collection of billing materials, so that's why he has.
I think he's going to build a small building in his backyard.
Small shed.
Of multiple colors.
Mosaic.
Guys, wait one second before you leave. On the item, the conditional use permit, I think the motion said there were three conditions. There are only two conditions.
That's correct.
So do we need to make an adjustment there, Mr. Zeman?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Sedoti, I think you made the motion, right?
Yes, motion to approve with two conditions.
Okay.
Second.
We're just, just amend the approval with, to reflect only the two conditions noted in the staff report. I think that'll clear up the record a little bit better.
Motion to amend the, the previous approval to reflect two conditions as stated in the staff report.
Do we need a vote on that?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second. Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mrs. Semperman.
Yes.
Ms. Moritz.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. So we just needed to clean house a little bit on that.
Thank you.
Okay, now, the Myers folks.
Good evening. I'm Chris Jones. I'm a real estate manager for Meyer, and I'm from Grand Rapids, Michigan. I have Lonnie West with me, with our civil consultant, Wolpert. She is from Dayton, Ohio. I think since between preliminary and final tonight, there, I don't know that we made any changes to the site plan unless you'd like to speak to them. I think we, maybe, what does look different to me is the, is the rear behind this door. And you can see that we added the trees along the perimeter that Lonnie is pointing out to. I think there was a question last time about, you know, we only, why do we have some gaps, and why were there gaps? And I think, I think I committed, myself committed, that if there were gaps, they would be filled in. And I think this plan reflects that, so there's not any misunderstanding.
Okay.
We heard Mr. Varga's comment last meeting as well about noise, that that was the biggest concern. And so we did raise the wall on our elevations. And so that wall that Lonnie's pointing to, that's typically a knee-high wall, which is only about three and a half feet tall. So we raised that to eight feet. So you can see the wall has been raised. And I think that was a concern that Mr. Varga raised last time, and we took that under advisement and made that adjustment, and now it's shown on our elevation.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to mention? I think there is. You want me to bring up the?
I think there is. You want me to bring up the brick and the imprint?
I did want to bring something to your attention tonight, and just maybe get some of your feedback, and then Lonnie and I can discuss it. We wanted to talk about really the sides of our building and the rear of our building. This elevation that's before you tonight is slightly different than our prior elevation. We have, our building is built with a precast tilt-up concrete forms. And what we do on the front of the building is, you can see the articulation and the changes in the facade as it goes down through there. And the front of our building has a brick imprint, which, to me, to the naked eye, it's very difficult to tell the difference between brick imprint and real brick, because the mortar joints are painted and that type of thing. When you turn the corners of our building, and Lonnie's pointing to those, now, when you turn the corner, yeah, on the pharmacy side of the building, the brick imprint ends. That's still brick imprint, but it ends along the side. At the face of the Garden Center. That's smooth. And then the rear of our building continues with the smooth precast, so that's all smooth. And then when you turn that corner, again, the smooth, you can tell where Lonnie just had her pen, that the brick imprint picks up again right there. And then it's smooth again. And some of our thoughts along those lines were, and the why we've made it different than the 1-9, I think we were, you know, we were thinking it's a smaller building, it's not very visible from the rear to anybody unless they're, you know, up in a hot air balloon or something, maybe. But there's a big bank, you know, a bank of, a transition of a slope that goes up to the residence. So, you know, I think that's why we went with a smooth on this, on this plan. Yeah, this is a good kind of cross-section of the elevation change in the rear of the building. So I wanted to point that out. I think Rick just got these elevations to the board, you know, as part of tonight's hearing. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. That's all I, that's all I had, unless Lonnie, you have anything to add?
So you've buffered that back wall with a fair amount of landscaping, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Exactly right. You'll see one corner of the, show them the site plan that's got the double row of trees. You can see the double row of trees in that area. And then the removal of the asphalt that's creating the green space areas here and here. Future building, future building pad there. So all this is currently in asphalt. And then, and then these line of trees, line of trees along the rear of the property. And I believe we, I believe we agreed to previously to repair any damaged fencing along the rear property line.
That's correct.
You glad, you know, that's, we understand that if there's repairs that need to be made or replacement that needs to be made, we'll do them.
Do you have a comment, Mr. Spence?
Yeah, Lonnie provided a maintenance agreement from First Interstate with the adjacent property owners, and they're responsible, what was it, after 95?
October 16 of 1995.
They were responsible after that time for any maintenance of the landscaping that was planted in their backyards.
They are First Interstate?
No.
They are the residents?
The homeowner is responsible for it.
Okay. So that clears that up?
Right.
Okay.
Now, just wanted to add a few things. You know, with this plan, we're removing approximately three acres of impervious surface area. Asphalt building, and you can see that, you know, there was another plan overlay that you should have in your packet, too, with the Kmart building. Can't turn to it real quick, but it's in your packet. The Kmart building's about up to here, and that distance, you know, from a side rooftop standpoint, because I know that came up, too, was about 430 feet. And now the building's moved over another 200 feet. And there is still a parapet design within that Meyer wall. There it is, perfect.
Now, I have a question for you. You have fencing around the landscape area, or the, not the landscape area, but the Garden Center.
Around the Garden Center is solid walls.
Okay.
There's a six-foot-high wall in the front and eight-foot-high wall on the two sides. I know there was some discussion whether we can make them all eight feet, but the problem with that is the front is actually an entry and an exit point for the store, and six-foot is a more inviting height, so people know that's an entry. And eight-foot, they wanted to keep around the sides for security reasons. So they aren't going to store anything over five-foot-high within that Garden Center. Yeah. I mean, you can see the green areas on here. Actually, you can see it better right here, where, like I said, we're eliminating three acres of pavement area, all on the side here, here, behind the store, where the sound wall is here in the back. And, you know, this is going to remain green until there's a user there that will come in and get site plan approval at that time.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga.
One of our favorite topics is screening of mechanical equipment. Your main elevation that shows the front of the building? This one right here?
Okay, yes.
You can actually see one of the mechanical units from that view, which means that probably if I just moved around in a radius in the parking lot, I'd be seeing either that mechanical unit. It's the two units that are up close behind the Meyer sign. You can actually see the little white sticking out there in the corner?
East of the Meyer sign.
Right. And you would, I would assume that if you had a view from the other side, you'd see the other unit through that gap, too?
I see, Mr. Varga, I see one rooftop unit on the front.
Right.
Which is right, kind of just-
Well, if you look at, if you look at your back elevation, you can see all five of your big units.
Yes.
And two of them are right up behind that sign.
Yes, sir.
And so from this angle, you can see one. If I had a corresponding angle, I would see the other one.
Well, when you say you could see, from where?
Well, from this view, I can actually see it in the elevation.
But this, but I guess my point is, if you're standing on the pavement, you could see them.
If you're up in an airplane, you could see them. You could see it in your elevation, which is a-
Ground level.
Eye level.
Isn't it from property lines, from all property lines?
Well, that would make it even, that would, that would actually, if you go further out, you'd actually see more of it.
Right, but there's so much landscaping and outlaw buildings within-
No, I'm not talking about, there's no landscaping. I'm looking at a mechanical unit, and I can see it in your elevation. Understand what I'm saying?
They just need to be shielded.
Yeah, right here. Excuse me. It's just sticking out in your elevation. You can see it right there. If I moved around, if I actually moved, I'd see it all the way around. And when I went to the other side, correspondently, I'd see the other one that's up close.
No, I agree with you. On the front, no question, you would see that little piece of RTU.
Well, and as you move, you'd see more of it, and then you'd go see the other one on the others, from the other side. All I'm saying, find a way to not see that. Okay? I understand that maybe that placement is important, but you have all your things, just figure out a way so I can't see it as I walk up to the building.
On the front elevation?
Front elevation, those two, right behind the Meyer sign, that you can see through the gaps on the other side.
I think he's saying from the back here, being, right? Is that what you're saying?
Oh, I think you're-
Yeah, I'm sorry.
From the back. When you look at the back, you can see you've got one, two, three, four, five units on the roof.
Yeah.
There's two that are up front.
No, okay, okay.
Behind the Meyer sign.
I totally understand what you're saying.
They're next to a gap in the wall.
Right.
And you can actually, with your view, it's a little fuzzy here, but you can actually physically see it in your drawing.
No, I see it. I only see one, but I know it-
You only see it when-
Because it's that angle.
As you walked around the other side, you'd see the other one.
I'm totally on the same page as you now.
Because you're looking southwest, if you're looking southeast.
I totally get what you're saying.
Approaching this building on foot from the parking lot, I'd like not to see the mechanical unit.
Only one is shown visible on this elevation, but it's because it's from an angle. If you were at the other angle, you'd see the other one. So I totally understand what you're saying.
Right. So I'm not worried about the side. I'm not worried about the back.
Okay.
I just don't want to see them from the front. Because I'm assuming that as I get farther away, my angle is, I see more of it.
No. I get your, absolutely understand your point. It's a point well taken, and we can, we can shield those. And I'll get with a consult, I won't try to figure out how it's the best way to shield it, shield it in front of you, in front of the board tonight, but we can shield those units.
So that you don't see that they're mechanical units.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, anything else for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Semperman. Right ahead.
First of all, I wanted to compliment you on the sound wall that you're going to put next to the loading docks. That will help a lot. And I was looking for that, along with Mr. Varga, looking for it. And then on the landscaping that you're going to be putting along the, directly behind the Meyer building.
Yes, ma'am.
So I see big green and I see little green, so I presume that big green is the canopies and the little green is the evergreens? Okay, so it is alternating, because when I went back there the other day, it was just, it's like dead trees. I don't know, I'm sure what was supposed to be there. What are they?
They look like shrubs.
Shrubs to us, dead shrubs.
They look dead, whatever they are.
No, you're right.
Okay.
You noticed the same thing.
Okay, well, I'm sure you did. So we're going to see green there at least for half the year. We'll see half-green.
Yes, ma'am.
And what size trees are we looking at?
Six-foot pines and two-and-a-half, two-inch caliber shade trees.
There's a schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with five conditions, with the fifth condition being that the mechanical equipment is shielded from the front view.
Second.
Jess.
Do you mind reading us those five conditions?
It's on our staff report.
Okay, 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 okay.
You don't have to do that. You're just adding a condition in addition to the five.
There's more on there right now, and we're adding it.
Thank you, I understand.
Jess, when you're ready.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mrs. Semperman.
Yes.
Ms. Moritz.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thanks. Mr. Spence, director's report?
Nothing.
Nothing. Entertaining motion to adjourn.